The first meeting of the 21st Council will come to order, all councilors are present tonight or will be, and we certainly want to welcome two new councilors, Councilor Gibson as well as Councilor Pena, we welcome you here, we're looking forward to serving with you, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Winter.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Civic parking passes are provided for members of the public, you can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign up table, the council will take a break at approximately seven o'clock this evening, we'll start with proclamations and presentations, Councilor Benton.
Thank you Mr. President, I have a proclamation recognizing Pearl Harbor Day, and I would like to call Mr. Bob Scott, President of the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors, and Joe Green, Honorary Member of Pearl Harbor Survivors, who accept the proclamation.
I've gotten this from you.
Good evening gentlemen, I'll read this and then if you have a few words that you want to speak, we'll have you speak, but let me read the clock first and then you can tell us to come around and receive the actual document. Whereas December 7th marks the anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, the day that lives in American history as a day of infamy, and whereas the attack on Pearl Harbor served as a defining moment in the lives of all who were touched by it, and whereas the Albuquerque chapters of the Pearl Harbor Survivors Association and the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors honor not only those killed that day, but all American veterans that have been killed in all wars and conflicts defending our cherished freedoms, and whereas the Albuquerque chapter of the Pearl Harbor Survivors, prior to its dissolution, expressed hope that the commemoration of our heroes is continuing, and that the memory of the tragedy of Pearl Harbor will be kept alive for our youth, and whereas honoring our heroes can be accomplished through daily good works and community service, we have proclaimed the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes that December 7th, 2013, is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, and urges the citizens of Albuquerque to honor those who have sacrificed in service to the country. Mr. Scott?
Yes, on behalf of John Stanwo, Charles Wayland, Stan White, Ike Shaw, and Robert Stevens, these are the five known Pearl Harbor survivors that still live in Albuquerque, unfortunately weren't able to be here tonight, but they're all in their 90s, so it's a little hard to get around them, we want to thank you for this honor, we're going to have a program at the Veterans Memorial on December 7th at 1:30, if anybody wants to show up, hopefully four of the five, one's in a nursing home, he can't make it, but hopefully four of the five will be there, and we want to extend that invitation to you, thank you.
Thank you, so that's December 7th at 1:30.
At 1:30 at the Veterans Memorial.
All right, we encourage everyone to come attend that, and come on up the line and your proclamation. (Applause). Sorry, Jose Edna, I almost forgot you, how could I?
Mr. President, council members, good evening, I have some notes that I'm going to try to do without, my wife became ill on me, so I have to be as soon as possible. First of all, I'd like to thank you all, I reiterate, Bob Scott said, thank you all for the annual, because I think the Pearl Harbor Survivors have received more proclamation and executive orders than any other organization in the city of Albuquerque since the city government, I would say, now, I'd like to thank especially you, Council Benton, for helping it, and your fine policy analyst, Diane Dolan, she's very instrumental, I thank you very much, I'd like to thank Bob Scott for the wonderful job that he's doing as the President of Sons and Daughters of the Pearl Harbor Survivors, actually, the Pearl Harbor Survivors, after a lot of thought, after 9/11, they have come up with the following, and they have entrusted me over the years, we've made a lot of interviews with them, and I know a lot about them, they're very humble people, I could get hardly anything about the accident, they were concerned about their buddies they lost, they were concerned not only about who they lost that day, that unforgettable day, but all the military people that have died, you know, from World War I all the way up to Afghanistan, Iraq, and they're always in support of veterans, I mean, troops are especially in harm's way. Now, I'm going to tell you two things that they entrusted after much thought, I'm going to present these two things for you, number one, I don't know whether these people are familiar with Highway I-10, I-10 is the south part of town, and it was dedicated at Pearl Harbor Memorial Highway, and it runs into Highway I-25, okay, down there by Las Cruces. The first proposal is to name, this was motivated by 9/11, the entire I-25 in honor of law enforcement that have been killed in the line of duty, making the ultimate sacrifice, making the ultimate sacrifice of protecting our lives and our constitutional rights. Phil Chacon was a very dear friend of mine, we worked together on a volunteer basis, okay, I go to his graveside every, it was September 10th, he died in 1980, and he was in there, there's another fine gentleman that also killed, it's a tough life, I rode about 30 years ago with, he's retired now, Captain, he was Captain APD, his name is Ray Chavis, and it's a very difficult job, you have to make, one night things got so rushed, so hard, that they had to deputize me, but anyway, number one, I mentioned it, naming the whole I-25 in honor of all of them, second, the Pearl Harbor Survivors knew, and they communicated, some of them knew Presidents John F. Kennedy and also President Eisenhower, and this is our proposal, make a chapter, number one, named after John F. Kennedy here in Albuquerque, Concerned Electorate of America, and we're concerned for getting everybody out to the polls, we're nonpartisan, Democrats, Republicans, we don't care who, there's a lot of wonderful ideas, one sad thing that we see, there's a lot of candidates that run, they have wonderful ideas, they lose, you don't see them again, okay, so we can learn a lot, you know, so like I say, the first one will be named after John F. Kennedy, the first one here in Albuquerque, the Duke City, the second one either is in Santa Fe or in Las Cruces, and I want to say this, the Pearl Harbor Survivors loved Albuquerque, they wanted to do everything they could, the 300 that I met, you know, a lot of them, most of them weren't from Albuquerque, but they loved the state, they loved their moms, they loved the people, and they wanted to do everything, their chief thing was public safety and preventive measures, so that is my proposal, that's my reason for coming down this evening, and we were talking about it, thank you kindly, and have happy holidays.
Thank you gentlemen.
And Councilor Winter with the next proclamation.
Thank you Mr. President, I'd like to invite Commander Bonnie Montoya and her guests down to the podium, very excited about this proclamation. Counselor, the city of Albuquerque, December 2nd, 2013, whereas Commander Bonnie Montoya received her bachelor's degree from UNM and began her distinguished career with the Albuquerque Police Department in 1993, working in field services and criminal investigations, and whereas in 2000 Commander Bonnie Montoya was promoted to Sergeant and oversaw the Criminal Investigations Division, which included robbery, violent crimes, homicide, domestic violence, sex crimes, missing persons, and spent time working on operations review under Chief Galton, and whereas Commander Montoya was promoted to Lieutenant in 2006, and graduated from the National FBI Academy in 2009, while simultaneously completing her master's degree at UNM, and whereas Commander Montoya's career included over 30 on-site officer-involved shootings, investigations, and over 500 violent crime scenes, and whereas Commander Montoya has served on hundreds of high-profile cases, including that of the 118th Street murder, the Baby Angel case, the Ellen Roth murder, the Heathrow manly investigation, and helped in solving the longstanding cold case of Michael Snyder, and whereas Bonnie Montoya was promoted to Commander in 2011 overseeing the Northeast Area Command, the largest of the six area commands, and whereas Commander Montoya's experience at the Family Advocacy Center and Criminal Investigations led her to champion the need for kids ID kits, allowing parents to have their children's fingerprints recorded through aid police recovery in the event those children are ever stolen or lost, and whereas Commander Montoya has received countless awards from neighborhood associations commending her dedication to making the Albuquerque community a safer place to live, and we have proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque hereby recognizes the commitment of Commander Bonnie Montoya for protecting and serving the citizens of Albuquerque, and I just want to say she's a great example of an exemplary Albuquerque Police Department officer, and we are going to miss you.
I don't know how to follow that up, there's a lot of reading, thank you, I appreciate that, it's been a great career, it's been 20 years, you look last of an eye, it's amazing how fast it goes, my husband Paul wouldn't think so, because during all those callouts, he's the one who had to wake up and see me off every time, but I've enjoyed my job, I've enjoyed my coworkers, and I want to thank you, Councilor Winter, Councilor Jones, for your support, because it is a daunting task going into an area command and learning how not only to take care of the officers, but take care of the public, and with your support, I think we made the Northeast a better place, and there were so many times that I needed, you know, just some input regarding neighborhood associations, and you both were very helpful, so I thank you for that, and like I said, I just, I've loved my career, it's been a good career, it's been a fun career, a lot of responsibility, but it was good, I loved it, so thank you.
We know, all of you are anxious to improve our city, and provide for the future safety and welfare of its citizens, we are most anxious to solicit your opinions regarding our recommendations, and we request that both your individual support, as well as the council's combined voices join in unanimous support, we believe the community wants to and deserves to have input, excuse me, and contribution in the next election of our Chief of Police, therefore, I repeat our very special request, that you please endorse our input and concerns as set forth in the binders which you have been presenting this evening, we ask you to publicly support our recommendations as a body and as individual elected leaders. Please place our concerns and recommendations as an action item on the Monday, December 16th, 2013 city council agenda, and we request that you assign to your appropriate committee or the special committee the task to review and adopt our inputs and concerns, we request that you require this committee to present the recommendations to the Monday, December 16th council body for adoption, for free, 100% free, we'll be highly honored to work with your committee to carry out this task. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., President Lewis, Vice President Sanchez, council members, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to appear before you.
Thank you, thank you Ms. Hall, thanks for your input for this formal presentation, Councilor Gardino.
Thank you Mr. President, Ms. Hall, thank you Mr. Michael for doing the great work that gets done out there, a lot of times with no thanks, and sometimes with a lot of strife, because you bring a lot of issues forward that are hard to deal with and are hard to hear, but I wanted to tell you that I commit myself not only to helping your process, but also making sure that it doesn't fall at deaf ears, and anything I can do, you know, I'll do to make sure that that becomes part of the meeting for next time, also wanted to thank you, and thank you for pointing out the fact that you, all of you, have done this work free of charge, and it sounds like, why would you say that, well, I think it's very important.
Let me tell you what I said.
Thank you.
Because I was called, oh, sometime last October, and I kind of felt it was, I don't know what jive made, oh, Mrs. Hall, as a community leader, we have a consultant here from California, who would like to hear the input from you and others in writing the description for the next Chief of Police, and at first I started to say, no, you know, why should I give my brains to somebody who's making money voluntarily, and then I thought, no, I guess I'll go, so, you know, two nights in a row, but people who get emails from me, you notice it's 3:30 in the morning, I stayed up, and I called all my friends, all here, and some who are not here, and I said, please give me some ideas, and especially some of those who have been affected by the kinds of things that happened, and so I got a lot of ideas, a lot of input, I put it together, and I gave it to the young man from California, I didn't want to, because I felt we were giving him our brains and he's been paid, that's why I said free.
Thank you again.
Sounds a little off the wall, right?
We're going to move to our economic development discussion, this discussion has been on the agenda, the actual agenda item of the last year, it's been great to hear from those in our community that are leading organizations that help bring, not only bring businesses and jobs to our city.
Vice President Sanchez, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, I'm truly humbled and honored to be here, this is my first official day, so please be nice, but I've already met some great people, including each one of you, and I'm very anxious to work with each one of you to create some momentum and economic viability in the city, I have some big ideas, but my first order of business is going to be to go on a listening tour, I want to talk to each and every one of you, I want to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money, and so I want to find out what your opinion is, I want to hear from you, what you think will work, what won't.
Good evening, I would like to talk a little bit before the light goes on, I'd just like to mention two things, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Ken Sanchez for winning the presidency, and secondly, I'm sure there's a lot of good personnel in the meeting, staff, I'm here tonight to speak about two things that I just remembered, number one, I live at, close to Arrenal and Unser on the west side, and a couple of months ago when they were replacing the dirt that the rain washed away, their heavy equipment broke a sidewalk, and they broke it into quite a few pieces, I'd reported it at 311, and it still had not been repaired, I don't know how long it's going to take to repair that sidewalk, but we've got about five people that are on wheelchairs on the west side, and they won't be able to use that sidewalk to get to their home or to the bus to pick up the bus, also, I'd like to speak about what this gentleman talked about for the police department, when we get police officers to come into Albuquerque to be police officers or police individuals, how can we know we're getting good police officers if we can't get a mental evaluation and background checks when they're coming from other states and from other countries, we need to concentrate on people from here in Albuquerque, and also, Saturday, I was at the state fairgrounds, and trying to cross the street, I noticed that even if you're in the intersection, some of these drivers will not let these people cross the street, and I would like for the meeting to make a overcross bridge across Central for your benefit.
Thanks Mr. Roberts, the exact location of this broken sidewalk, if you could make sure that our staff knows that exact location, our director of the DMD is here, and we'll make sure we follow up to make sure that that's.
This massive threat to Albuquerque's water, would you take a stronger public stand to stop it, if Al Qaeda were responsible, would you take a stronger public stand to stop it, if Russia had created this underground river of poison to wage chemical warfare against us, would you take a stronger public stand to protect our water, are you scared to stand up to our own US government, are you afraid of a fending curtain Air Force Base and the voters who work there, are you scared of being branded unpatriotic and extremist, do you have the conscience and courage to demand state and federal action now, will you do your damnedest to protect the water supply for more than one half million people now, and possibly millions more into the future?
John Young, Steve Torres, and Ken Ellis. Mr. Young here. Welcome.
I'm John Young, a North Valley resident, and I'm opposed to the roundabout on Candelaria and Rio Grande, the recently completed Parsons-Berkeley study from this past July stated, the assessment found the existing signal.
Good evening, Vice President Lewis, incoming President Sanchez, congratulations, congratulations also to you too, incoming Vice President Jones, special welcome to the two members of the city council, and members of the council as well, I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Mrs. Hall and the presentation she made earlier, and I want to first of all thank President Lewis for having granted her the opportunity to make that presentation this evening, we know you didn't have to do that, and we thank you for granting her that consideration, this evening, along with my good friend Ken Ellis and Mike Gomez, who was also here this evening, I'm here on behalf of the families that have been affected by police violence and excessive force for the last couple of years, and I encourage you to take a very careful consideration to the document that Ms. Hall presented to you this evening, I want to assure you that many, that a considerable amount of time, by a lot of people, both community leaders and just plain old John and Mary Does, a lot of those people offered their thoughts and ideas into presenting that document, and that's why we call it a collaborative effort, it's got a lot of ideas in there, a lot of useful ideas, and I encourage you, don't just take it home, don't just put it on the shelf, but please pay attention to it, the selection of our next Chief of Police by this administration is one of the most important things that is going to happen in our community in the next few months, it's a decision that will affect this community for years to come, and we hope that you will take an active part in that process, and we hope that you can start by paying attention to the document that we presented this evening, thank you very much, we look forward to continuing to work with you, and thanks again for the opportunity to come before you this evening.
Thank you, Steve Torres, I'm sorry, Ken Ellis, no, Steve, thanks so much, Mr. Torres, Ken Ellis, and then Kevin Kirby.
Good evening, President Lewis and Mr. Sanchez and councilors, I just want to thank everybody involved in all this, you know, it's been a long road to hope, and we've got a ways to go, and I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome of it, I just want to again thank everybody that's involved and everybody who's trying to make this a better community, this is quite an endeavor, and we got a chance to set a precedence for the rest of the country with our POC and the whole process, so I'm just. So, I'm just very thankful for everybody and once again, all the people that have stepped up and made this happen. I anticipate DOJ doing the right thing and making this a better community and a better police department for all. So, once again, thank you and thank everybody.
Good evening. Support of Fesh, Kevin Kirby, and Nora Naya.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Sipora Nafesh, and I'm a resident of the North Valley, here to speak about the proposed roundabout. When the problem was identified as the intersection of Rio Grande and Candelaria, the proposed solution.
Nora Naya.
Yes, President, Ken Sanchez, Dan Lewis, acting president, run it this time, but I really appreciate that you have been here and the councilmen and women. I want to come here and thank you each one for the work you have done. I have always been impressed by you standing up to the people that have come in to talk to you. I also am very appreciative of Ms. Jewel Hall. I am behind her 110%. I feel that she has worked the hardest of all to present what she has presented, and I believe most definitely that everything that she has given in to you that you should take into consideration, and I know you will, I know you've been listening without a doubt. Most of all, I want to say that I am so grateful that Ms. Gibson, Councilwoman Gibson, is here to join us. I do hope that everyone that comes in and talks to you will be a little more caring and appreciative of what's going on. I know now, as I've been here, I know that all of us are out for the same thing, good and well, in mankind. And just to say something important is what I believe, to get a new chief of police here, I believe that it would be very good thinking on our part to get someone that is from here. Of course, that is probably not doable, but to really give it our all, to do everything we can to not investigate so much, but to understand that he will do a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Silvio Delangelo, Roger Mickelson, Evelyn Feldner.
Congratulations, councilors, and Mr. Sanchez. You know, I hope there's not a repeat of partisan politics, and I think the vote on the roundabout will tell us whether that's still true. You know, remember, we have a land of apathy. Twenty percent of people voted and made our election. This mayor was elected with 13% of votes registered voters, remember that. As far as a new chief, I wasn't contacted to talk to Mr. Burgeiser and had some ideas, and Jewel, unfortunate, she incorporated a lot of my ideas into her paper. You know, I don't care whether we have a black, white, Hispanic, Asian American, Native American, woman or man as a police chief. We need the best police chief. And I don't care whether it's from New Mexico. Sometimes I think that's a liability, you know. And, you know, the other objection I have is the damning, the former military officers, EMTs and those things, those people are among the most professional and probably made the best police chiefs in the city. We're to search and find the best police chief of a big city, make him. We don't want Alan Banks. You've seen what he's done. You've seen how he's defied the Inspection of Public Records Act. You know, ultimately, the mayor's going to pick the chief, and you're going to blame him. And, you know, if he does the same job he did with Robin Hammer and didn't tell you about his problems with the DA, then you're going to be led by the nose. And he doesn't have the interest of people in mind, you do. You know, we have tax waste going on, I talked about it. The roundabout was one, but the Great Streets Project on 12th is another, just like lead and coal. You need to use judicial, a little fiscal responsibility and represent us for a change. And it would be nice if John Simon also complied with the New Mexico Inspection of Public Records Act, or TET, as well as.
Roger Mickelson, Evelyn Feldner, and then Michael Pride.
Thank you. And I will say Presidents Sanchez and Lewis.
Evening, councilors. Thank you for letting me speak. Congratulations, Ken. I want to thank you for letting Ms. Hall give that presentation. I was asked to contribute to that, and I hope my stuff made the cut. I didn't get to see the whole thing. But I did hand, send, give you guys up this thing of Sir Robert Peel, who is attributed to be the father of the modern police department, and I hope you take a good look at that and maybe incorporate in your questioning of the candidates that will probably be coming before you for chief of police. There is one thing that may not have gotten into her presentation, and that was that every officer be given an identification number. And I don't know if you know that, but right now, we don't have that. They're bad as numbers, don't identify anything. So, I think that's something that we could do for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Rourke, followed by Simon Polikowski, and then Nick Estes.
Good evening, councilors. The last City Council meeting, Sean Willoughby spoke of how the POC and the task force were cancers. Then he went on to talk about the Constitution and how it should be upheld. If I ever got stopped by Officer Willoughby, what kind of officer would he be? An officer that believes in the Constitution and be fair and just, or one that wants to strip me of my rights? If Officer Willoughby is so concerned about the POC and the task force, perhaps he should consider coming to the meetings and becoming part of the solution. Thank you.
Simon Polikowski, Nick Estes, and Joel Gallegos.
Council President, councilors, I think there should be a few questions asked of any candidate for police chief of Albuquerque. What would they do with an officer who calls himself the human garbage disposal? What they would do with an officer who the city agrees to violating citizens' constitutional rights? What he would do with six officers that showed up at what an investigating officer considered a crime scene? There are many more, but I think those three questions should be asked of any candidate. If they're unwilling to answer, or give an answer for those questions, they should be immediately disqualified as chief of Albuquerque. These questions need to be answered. The City of Albuquerque and citizens cannot afford what has been going on the past few years with our police department, not in financial nor in human costs. And these tough questions have to be, being chief is not an easy job. I once worked with a deputy, retired deputy chief of police, and he said criminals, people violate the law should go to jail, and I agree, and those who enforce the law should be held to a higher standard than those of us who live under it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Estes, Joel Gallegos, and Susan Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Congratulations to the new councilors and to the new officers of the council. I've been involved with various city projects for as long as I can remember. I've lived here a little over 50 years, and I'm one of those people who, sometimes it's good and sometimes it's bad. As I drive around the city, as I live in the city, I think of things that I think perhaps could be better, and the city has made tremendous progress in many ways. I'm particularly attentive to the streetscape, and I think about it from the economic development perspective, and I think about it from the perspective of just living here and having this be a good place for folks to live and for people to grow up. One thing I've noticed ever since I came to high school, I think, is the electric power poles all over the city and how ugly they generally are, in particular in the Old Town area, Long Central and, or Central and Lomas come together in Rio Grande. Here we are in the heart of the historic part of Albuquerque, and there, we really have the blight of these electric power poles, old wooden ones leaning in every direction. I was out there just this afternoon. We have an opportunity, thanks to Councilor Benton and the other members of Land Use Committee to do something about that, or at least to make the first step, and that is in the metropolitan redevelopment plan for that area for the Closey and West Central. I understand that it will now have a provision that indicates that the city ought to negotiate with PNM to make sure those power lines are underground. I think that should be done for all of Old Town. It's the heart, it's the spiritual heart of our city, and that would be an excellent place to start to make the city look better. There are many other areas where we have, you know, UNM and downtown and other places where I'm very grateful that the city has done that, but here's a place that we really ought to have on the list for taking that step. Thank you.
Councilor Benton.
And Mr. Estes, I want to thank you for pointing that out to me. You weren't the first to point it out, but you pointed it out in the context of the MR Plan. And when we have these, when we create these MR Plans, it is an opportunity for us as a city to prioritize the kind of public investments that hopefully will spur economic rebirth. And Old Town's had its struggles, like, you know, love Old Town, boy, I really enjoyed going over there and just hanging out, whether it's at a concert or going out to eat or just showing someone around who's not seen it before. And so important to our city, and you make a very important point, and our friends over at PNM are not always, they don't give these projects away for cheap. I think anyone that's involved in the business knows that, that they, they'll hold us up for every penny they can. But we really should, as a city, since we work with them on rights of ways, and a lot of them rights away, of course, for all their facilities, to really try to use that leverage, especially in a place like the central quarter in Old Town. So, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Estes. Hey, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Sarah, it's very interesting you bring that up. I know in my district, I have tried to work with them in various and certain lines, and my experience with them is they're not concerned about beauty, they're concerned about the bottom line, who's going to pay for it, whether it's going to be the rate payers or the City of Albuquerque. And, you know, basically, it wasn't very successful in trying to work with them, but that's their bottom line. And so, I'd love to see them be more of a partner and try to do some of these things, but if you don't have the money, if somebody's trying to pay for it, they're not going to do it.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Estes. Thank you very much for bringing that up. I wish we could do it all over the city. You're absolutely right, but there are certain places that we should really concentrate in. Old Town is one of them. Many of the other centers, I think, and quarters that could stand that kind of treatment. But, you know, I think we give in too easily to PNM. I think right of way is a right of way, and I think we should have some kind of zoning that says there are certain areas you can't do that to. Now, some of it already happened, but I think we could, you know, attractively ask that they start burying or whatever the lines that they put up because they do it with impunity. And I think we just sort of bend over and say, "Well, you know, there's nothing we can do." Well, we're in charge of the city, and I would hope that we would have the political will and the order to tell PNM, you know, that you're a customer and you ought to do a lot of the things that would be best for the city and not just for you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Estes. I might add that I'm a former assistant city attorney, and I'm, will be happy to lend whatever legal expertise I have to this. With your permission, you'll probably hear from me about this general issue again, and I'd be happy to work with the administration while trying to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Johnson, Sidney Hodge, and Barry Otis.
My name is Joel Gallegos. I'm with the Answer Coalition, and I showed up here to support Ms. Jewel Hall and her proposal. I think it's a long time coming. Something definitely needs to be done, at the very least, about the situation with the police here. And I would also like to come up here to kind of touch on a point that I think is the underlying issue. I mean, we talk about, you know, changing the police chief and, you know, making police officers held accountable, and that's all good and all, but I think the underlying issue here is, I mean, what role do the police serve in society today? How did they come about in the first place? And a lot of this stems back to economic pressures. I could say, you know, throw around the words like ruling elite and talk about that sort of thing, but I think it was illustrated best the other day. We were at a protest at a Walmart demanding that workers get better share, treated better, you know, better pay, and who were the first people to come out there and tell us to leave and escort us off of the property but police officers? Now, I'm not saying that the individuals behind the badge are somehow inherently evil or bad. I know that's not the case, but we have to know that historically, some of the worst crimes that have ever been committed have been people simply carrying out orders, just doing their duty. And I think that it's important to point that out to people because a lot of times it's very hard to articulate, it's very hard to kind of pinpoint what, you know, economics and the way that certain marginalized communities economically disadvantage people, what role they all play in this whole game, in this whole system. And I think just that incident at the Walmart illustrates a point. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Johnson, Sidney Hodge, and Barry Otis.
Good evening, councilors. Congratulations to the new councilors and to the new officers. I'd like to echo Evelyn Feldner's appreciation of Joe Martinez.
Kerry Pearson and Paige Murphy.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. I am a member of the Police Oversight Task Force, but I want to make it very clear, I am speaking for myself and myself only. I am not speaking on behalf of anybody else. At the last council meeting, somebody got up and complained about the fact that a member of the Police Oversight Commission was meeting with, having lunch with members of the task force. I'm one of those members. I want to thank the council members who spoke up and said, "There's nothing wrong with that." The only people that task force members are not allowed to speak with are each other, if too many of us do so. But if anybody, anybody, has any ideas, I can speak for myself, that they want to share with me, that they think will improve the functioning of the police department, the way it relates to the community and its performance, and not just complain about what somebody else is saying, I'd be happy to have lunch with them, exchange emails with them, or talk on the phone with them. On a related matter, in materials that had been provided to the council by paid consultants who were doing reviews of the police oversight process, it was pointed out that the most important factor in an effective police department is the chief, not civilian oversight, the chief. And for that reason, I urge you, even though you have less control over selection of the chief, that you pay as much attention to the selection of the chief as you do to any recommendations that the task force makes.
Thank you. Thanks, Kerry Pearson and Paige Murphy.
Gary Pearson, thank you. Thanks, sir. Council Presidents, incoming and outgoing, council members.
Yes. Yes.
Professional champion.
I pulled out the net, wasn't called.
Hello, hello.
We want to thank Cassandra for spending hours, days, and tender loving care of our cake. It's incredible.
It's incredible.
We have swaddling great juice, if anybody would prefer. So, wait, treat that. We have swaddling great juice, if anybody would prefer. Wait and trade that out.